Take it down, Alex isn't coming with me.
And we're just getting ready to start the meeting.
Okay.
We're gonna start the meeting, um, all presidents, and we'll start with the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and I think we gotta start with the budgets, maybe?
Yes, you gotta open the public hearing.
So I'm gonna open the meeting for the public hearing for the budget.
Okay. So, um, the 2025 budget as advertised is at two million, twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Um, and it's broken down into these different categories. Um, the rainy day fund, eighty thousand dollars, the general fund, one million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Local roads and street, thirty-five thousand, motor vehicle highway, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Law enforcement continuing ads, six thousand dollars. Cumulative capital improvement, twenty-five thousand, cumulative capital development, thirty thousand. The rest of them are home rule funds, and these have nothing to do with tax dollars. These are just, um, donation funds, et cetera, but we have to budget for them. So one of them is for the EMS, which is twenty-one thousand eight hundred. The fire department is fifty thousand dollars. The park donations was ten thousand, redevelopment commission, fifty thousand. Um, the opioid unrestricted fund, five hundred dollars. And the home rule tourism is twenty thousand dollars. So that comes to the total of two million, twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars is what is gonna be advertised for the 2025 budget. So does anybody have questions?
Go on once. Somebody's gotta have a question, I'm sure. Nope, you have a question?
I'll make a motion to accept the 2025 budget.
This is just a public hearing of it, so we will, we will adopt it in two weeks.
Gotcha.
On the same, so we just need a motion to close the public hearing.
We need a motion to close, I make the motion to close the public hearing on the 2025 budget. You're awesome.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So motion, hearing, to close the hearing, and now we'll start into the, um, regular meeting. Um, everybody has a chance to look at the minutes for last month. Any additions or corrections for, um, last month's meeting?
I make the motion to accept the meeting that last month. I'll second that.
If you'd say aye.
Aye.
Motion, hearing, to accept the minutes without any changes. Um, old business, there's ordinance, two thousand, twenty-four, last, oh, six. And, um, right off the top of my head, I don't recall what that ordinance was.
Um, this is the plan commissions ordinance that, uh, this would be the third and final reading and passage on changes to... I don't remember what chapter it was, chap- chapter three? Yeah, okay.
And I was just, again, making some clerical here, corrections. Adding to the possible, yeah. So, any questions, uh, before we move on to that?
Motion to pass.
Motion on the board to pass ordinance, two thousand, twenty-four, oh, six.
Oh, second that.
On second of honor, if you'd say aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass. Uh, moving into new business, we have Leah, um, and she's here to talk to us about electric charging stations and electric vehicles.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about a grant opportunity. I have a handout, um, for each of you, and then I'll make one of these available. People can...
Leah, if you don't mind, try and talk so people can hear. And you're with MayCog?
Yes, you'll be standing here.
Either way.
Um, yeah, I'm, do you want to? Thank you.
If you wanna, feel welcome, and feel up for cheer, too, doesn't matter either way.
Whatever, what's offering, standing, whatever you... Kathy Bottles, can't hear. Um, my apologies, she's online.
Aye.
Is my phone on? Testing, testing, one, two, three. I'll sit a little closer.
And it should be, I turned it up, can she still not hear?
Testing, testing, one, two, no.
Nobody else has said they had, can you hear?
Okay.
She can hear now?
It's showing that it's on.
She's asking if anybody can speak up, if not, it is busy. I'll try to, I'll try to project. Um, so this is a grant opportunity that MayCog has already been awarded, it's federal money. Um, so MayCog is now making selections for local governments and actually other private site hosts that would like to have electric vehicle charging amenities, either in their town, or could be an apartment, or another private business. Um, and so we are building a waitlist, and we had a couple folks, Middlebury and New Carlisle, that decided not to proceed at this time, and so we have some opportunities to add other communities. Um, we are adding North Webster at their public library, and we have another spot that's come available for a small town if there's interest from Bourbon. Um, I've provided a link to a website where, um, anyone here in the room can go see all this information. It's... Where is the actual link? Um, it's engage dot maycog dot com, it's engage dot maycog dot com. And you can go to our new charging and fueling infrastructure grant webpage that lays out the program, um, the site host application form, which is due October fourteenth, will be making decisions by November first. It goes through the series of roles that MayCog would have as, MayCog would do, handle all the money, building the station, contracting, installation, environmental things with the federal government, and reporting. And then the site host responsibilities would be the town or whoever owned the property it was placed on. Um, that would be providing the power to the station, um, having the utility account, collecting all the revenue. So offsetting, you have a user fee that you set when people use the station. You pay the electricity, and then you collect the revenue to offset that. Uh, maintaining the area around the station. The most significant component is providing a twenty percent cost share. So the federal government provides eighty percent, the local match is twenty percent. MayCog has committed to help cover two to three thousand dollars of that local match out of our local funds. So that buys that down a little bit, maybe, maybe by about thirty percent. Uh, so based on the total project cost estimate, which we think is anywhere from... There's a large range, installation costs are hugely variable based on the specific location you choose and where the power's at and how you're gonna get it there. So, um, you have to be smart about the, the choice of citing, but, um, we think maybe around fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars for the entire project cost. And then, so maybe budgeting, or thinking about eleven to fifteen thousand dollars as the local match. Uh, two to three thousand dollars is what MayCog would be able to provide to reduce that, um, based on the number of small towns. We're only providing this to towns less than five thousand population, so the cities or counties or larger municipalities are not receiving, um, assistance from MayCog financially. Additionally, uh, we would intend to apply for the federal tax credits that local governments can, um, now, even though you're not a tax paying entity, there are change in tax law, so you can get, um, just like a, as an individual applying, um, for your IRS reimbursement, uh, your refund. That same process would apply, there would be a cash flow delay, um, completing the project in one year and applying for that in a future year. But, um, it's MayCog's intent to apply for that federal tax credit for the infrastructure projects. Um, take the money that we get back, split it in half, that's my proposal. Um, half would go back to the town, um, to help further reduce the actual net cost to the town in, in completing a project like this. Take that burden off, because it's not a essential, critical municipal service, it's an amenity that's nice to have, but it's not critical service. And then the other half of that funding would go into helping maintain the station. We have, we will have thirty-two of these on a region-wide basis, having a pool of funds that if you have vandalism, or someone else has a car hit the station, or something happens, um, anywhere in our region with those stations, we have money set aside that can help out with that unexpected cost. So that's what we would intend to do with that additional funding. So while upfront, it would be a twenty percent match, it's our goal to get that down closer to about ten percent of the project. Um, we have to work that out with, um, tax advisors and everything, but, um, that's our intent to try to take the burden off, um, especially smaller towns where you have a fixed budget. So, um, that is a summary of really the financial piece of things. Um, we've had really good success with the utilization of these stations in other communities. Um, town of Culver and the city of Plymouth being the two that have had, um, stations installed since twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And the city of Plymouth has the highest utilization out of any station, that includes like Mishawaka, South Bend, Alcart. City of Plymouth is seeing the most use of their stations, so it's pretty impressive. Um, I included in this packet pictures of, um, what that station looks like in Plymouth, so you all can, can see that. Um, similar design, except that this grant requires there be four charging spaces for electric vehicles. The one in Plymouth has two, um, so that creates a significant space constraint. So when I came to tour this town, maybe a year, a year and a half ago, we really struggled to find anywhere. And that's pretty upsetting when that rule came out, that guideline came out, like, what about small towns? You're really narrowing, pinching that down. Um, obviously, it doesn't work well, looking at the parking situation here today, the lot next door, that would take up...
Well, hopefully our, uh, fire truck is eventually moved, so...
So, we know it's gonna be hard.
Can you split those two charging stations out?
We could try, I don't think it would, it's supposed to be per location, we could try to apply for an exception and say...
Probably got a bad, not a handicap, could be that.
Yeah, so then it would end up being six spaces, because you'd have to have per location. We can try, I am willing to, I'm willing to push it on behalf of the small towns that kind of get, uh, have, in this, you don't have a Walmart parking lot, so... Um, but I looked at like the Kaiser Field lot, and it's probably really busy sometimes, but...
What about up here?
Uh, on the street?
Right, the parking, kind of, the parking lot right here in front of the...
Do that, um, I can take a look, you could do that. I just don't know how, especially right downtown, street parking.
Well, it's, it's off-street, it's right here in front of the, front of the building, and I'm almost thinking that's a benefit to our businesses downtown, using the, the service in town.
Because if they're at the park, then they're walking, uh, within three or four blocks or something.
You, you said we have to have two start charging stations for four vehicles.
You can do one for one, or each, two stations with two, it doesn't...
I was gonna say, here, it, it's apparently showing where there's two vehicles can be charged on one station.
That's correct.
So we would have to have two of those.
Correct, in that configuration, you can also do one unit per each, it, it really varies, but the key is four cars have to be able to charge at once.
Yeah.
And then, um, there has to be one of those spaces that would be banned accessible with the sixteen feet between the aisle.
You know, Russley, since you've had these installed since two thousand twenty-one, my call, but what the projected income is per year to help offset...
Yeah, I can get that for you, we have a report from last year that has all of our, we had ten of these stations, we got grant funding to install, and I can provide that to you. Uh, many of these communities chose to offer charging for free initially, um, and so the revenue number is a little out of whack. But, uh, when you do the calculation, you would need to charge about a dollar fifty, are you on NIPSCO?
Yeah.
You would need to charge about a dollar fifty per hour to, like, break even on your operating costs for electricity, credit card fees. I don't know if you, you wouldn't have demand charges on general service small for NIPSCO, but, um, it doesn't really account for the riders, because the riders are kind of variable and hard to track over time, but about a dollar fifty would do it for the speed that these will be at.
And this would be mapped out and all, everybody's electric vehicles, so if we had somebody going down thirty, you would actually draw some potential business in downtown.
Possibly, everyone has apps, and that's how you find these. Um, but these will be level-two destination stations, so, um, it's a little bit different. I modified this, but I didn't modify the units, these are actually the higher-powered, level-three units in this drawing, where you would get hundreds of miles in twenty minutes. We're, we're talking about four hours getting a hundred miles. So this is really intended more for destination, someone to come for some meetings here, or to a restaurant. Not really for a super quick stop, so they may be less likely to come off thirty for that. But, um, someone had a reason to be here, coming from Fort Wayne, and then they need to get back, it would allow them that opportunity. So I, I don't know how much of a case I'd make for a draw for, um, people passing by on thirty, but certainly a reason, um, to spend time, spend more time, for charging.
So, another question I have is if we could start the grant process and see what the figures are, if we can, we make a final conclusion?
Yep.
Of committing to?
Yep, we can, you can apply, we can accept you into the program, like, small towns are, like, we serve first and foremost local governments, so we're going, you know, you have a good chance of being selected, and then can look at all the figures, um, and if you're not quite ready to do the project, or it doesn't align with the, the budget, then we could push this into twenty twenty-seven. We're doing that with a couple projects, because there's a parking lot upgrade, or new construction on an apartment building that's gonna be associated, or, um, a public park renovation or something. So if twenty twenty-seven makes more sense, you can choose to bump things down the road and push it off. And then when it gets to twenty twenty-seven, make another decision at that time. Because we've, we're phasing this into two buckets, those that are ready now, and those that have a reason to delay another couple years.
I think we're foolish not to see what our opportunities are.
That's what I think, too.
But if we, if we don't have to sign on the dotted line, we just see what we have.
Was there a motion on our table to proceed?
I'll make the motion to proceed. I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, so we have a motion that's all passed. So my next question is, you talked to us about electric vehicles, I know that you, uh, hopefully approached, uh, NAPD.
Yes. Uh, McCormick Motors.
Yeah, McCormick Motors, I went up and got one and brought it down.
Oh, yeah?
Um, I think many people drove it here. Um, it's, it, I was really surprised because I didn't realize how much power and how fast they are.
This Silverado.
Yeah. Um, he indicated that the police package vehicles, we chose to go, that wouldn't be done until next week, I think, next week, or the next couple weeks. Um, what kind of grant opportunities to get after that?
Yeah, so right now, the only thing that is certain is that, um, the, something like the Chevy Blazer EV would be eligible for a seven thousand, five hundred dollar, um, federal tax credit. Again, the town would be eligible under the new tax rules as a non-taxpaying entity. So that's seven thousand, five hundred dollars off, but there's the cash flow issue where that can't be done at point of sale, that has to be done from the next tax season. Um, so the full purchase price upfront, and then you get seven thousand, five hundred dollars back. If you want to learn more about that process, the city of Plymouth just purchased a Ford Lightning, um, outright, their, their Parks Department, and then did the process of getting the, the money back.
When I spoke with that, we needed, they indicated that the city ended up giving a grant for a hundred and thirty-some thousand?
They did, for two vehicles and, and the charging infrastructure for their city hall. Um, that was a one-time grant that was made available through the Indiana Office of Energy Development. Um, it was a one-time pot of funds, but, um, there are other grants that come out from time to time. There's a Rural Energy Innovation Grant, and some others that, um, could be applied for in the future if those programs continue to be available. They're just not currently open, and I don't know. The OED is very busy with, you know, the energy efficiency rebate program and some other new funding buckets that they're rolling out. So I don't know the, the timeline, but it's good to be ready and to know when the time comes.
So why would we be, I guess, uh, be prepared?
Yeah.
For that type of grant that we could get a grant?
The most helpful thing to be prepared would to, be to do a fleet audit, fleet analysis, where you have your full list of all the vehicles you have, light duty, I mean, anything with diesel as well, just in case other grants come up. And know exactly which vehicles, um, you would want to replace, in what order, um, what's their miles, or diesel, what are their hours, annual hours, and have all that data ready to go, so we can just plug in the numbers and apply for grants when they come up. Because usually we only have maybe a month, maybe two months, and that's not a lot of time to bring something to council, get it approved, get the grant written. So you could do that fleet analysis ahead of time.
And what time period during the month do these grants usually come out, like, spring, fall?
Spring, fall, s- spring, fall, typically not summer. Yeah, that's when we've seen the cadence of those opportunities. And there would be other opportunities not through the OED, um, there's USDA funding sometimes available, um, community facilities grants, or other things that can be used for electric vehicle infrastructure, maybe not the vehicles themselves. Um, there was recently something that Argus just applied for, an EPA settlement. So some private party got in trouble for doing something, and they had to pay money, and that gets used for some altruistic purpose. So we applied for that for Argus, because we knew they were interested in that for police. Things just pop up randomly sometimes. Um, USDA, maybe something to do with like EMS, um, type of grant opportunity that could come up for, specific to police, or other emergency services.
So I guess I'm gonna defer, and Bill, what do you think about, because you guys are trying enough to do for a big merger next year? Next year? So, your thought process of having an electric vehicle added to your fleet? When I drove it, I liked the car.
I like to drive it, I'd also like to see the SUV. I'd like to go test that out, but I don't see a problem. I do have a question about the, uh, electric for a police car, is all the equipment that's involved in that vehicle, how long are we gonna have a charge to do a tour?
I asked that question, um, with the cell, when I put, um, it on it. And they indicated that the Blazer has come out specifically geared towards, it's a police package, and items we run, the computer, the laptop, that kind of stuff, is very low voltage compared to what they have. And he indicated to me that, um, the maintenance costs are really low. And the only real expense that we, that he told me they have is that the batteries create, the truck or vehicle to be very heavy. And you're replacing tires more frequently than what you normally would on a gas vehicle.
Some of the best, um, fuel savings are with police, because of the amount of idling that you would have to run that equipment, you had to run the engine. Now you don't have to run an engine, like you're saying, the low, low-power draw, so...
So you do for one twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six?
Your truck's up in twenty twenty-five, that's the next one.
But when you budgeted it, you budgeted it over a period of two years, is how they did that in our budget workshop.
I, I would like to try to get some kind of grant, like, in that NAPD got a word of, the page for it.
Pay for a hundred percent.
Well, like, like she said, you're, it's, it's kind of the luck of the thing, when you see them, yeah, I was gonna say, that doesn't normally happen.
Even though, I mean, over the course of two years, if we only had to pay twenty percent.
Yeah, it's seventy-five hundred dollars is all you're gonna get, you know?
For what's available, for what we know is available today.
Today, so that's eighty thousand dollars Silverado.
I'm saying if we get a grant down the road or something, we'll, you know, we'll pay like a charging station.
I haven't seen, you drove a Silverado, I haven't seen a Silverado in like a police application, I don't know that would be pursuit rated, but the Ford is designed, the Lightning.
He indicated Blazer would be.
Yeah.
But they also, the Ford also has one, too, but I haven't ever drove that.
Yeah.
Again, that's the thing of the Lightning. Yeah, did you talk a little bit about the Ford, you just, uh, I don't know why that, due to the batteries, because I know there's lots of places on the battery.
Yeah, on the Silverado, and, and of course, it could be different with the, the Blazer, but he indicated that it was, uh, eighty thousand miles or ten years. And talking with Bill on the, on the mileage that he produces, or you guys produce, it probably four or five years would get off of it, if, if the batteries did fail on that warranty.
I've also seen eight years and a hundred thousand miles, just like flipping those numbers.
And did he tell you what the cost to replace those batteries were?
Well, no, I never got into that, I know it's expensive.
I know, it's like thirty-seven thousand dollars to replace the batteries.
I would say, so I've, I personally have been driving an electric vehicle for seven years, and know a lot of electric vehicle drivers. I almost never hear people replacing the battery in their vehicle, they don't just typically fail, and if they fail, it's a warranty issue. What happens is there's a very, very slow predictable battery degradation. If that were to drop below a certain point, then it'd be a warranty issue, but what people do over a decade is, you sell, that car doesn't get the range you need anymore to make your commute, you sell the car to someone else who has a value. And so when you look at really old electric vehicles who have had a range depletion over time, they're still on the road, being driven by someone as a teen driver, just getting to school. They're not, just doesn't make economical sense to swap batteries for that reason.
But then over a course, if you can not have to buy a vehicle for ten years, and that gas and maintenance, I guess, it has to be a lot of expense, I guess. So, I don't know, I guess, until we've got a little bit more, yeah, pushing credit.
Can see what grants pop up over the next six months to a year, and then also, um, I can get some quotes that are, um, quotes that we've had, other local governments actually purchased vehicles, like the F-150 Lightning for Marshall County Highway, and then they're also getting a Chevy Silverado. Can give you those quotes, so you can compare the pricing, which is a bit different from MSRP, they've got discounts that were pretty favorable on both of them. Um, so you can then do the math, the seven thousand, five hundred, and see if it's worth it. Doesn't include upbidding costs, obviously, that's...
Because you're gonna need a supercharger, and also, different charger, and all that, what, they're looking for.
Yes, so there's, there's another option with our grant that you can put in faster charging. So instead of seven kilowatts, which gives about twenty-five miles an hour on a, um, small car, you could put in a nineteen KW charger, so it's a little over twice as fast, and that would give you that hundred percent charge overnight, every night, in case of unexpected mileage. You wouldn't need a superfast charger, but you would want to beef up whatever you put in for the public, also utilize that for the police department and have it be faster.
Yeah.
That could be arranged through MayCog's grant as well.
So I guess at this point, if we're not getting it at no cost, we need to keep our gas vehicles on, so...
Mm-hmm, yeah, I can feel that. I guess, you know, having charging stations on the road, if we proceed with the charging stations, would that help with, with the process of some of these plans?
Yeah, I think that certainly makes a lot of sense, if you already have charging, it makes it that much easier, um, to integrate your fleet. And also, there may be concerns, I would have concerns, I come from a small town of three thousand people, and, um, if I were to think about putting in four charging spaces in my small town, I just don't think there'd be that amount of utilization right away. And so it might feel like wasted space, if you have municipal vehicles using it, it's absolutely not wasted space, and you're getting your fuel savings out of that, so... It's a good synergy to the two projects.
I appreciate you working with us, and helping us out with, with stuff, and, um, being engaged with this, I, I mean, that's very vital to be engaged.
We will help write any grants that come up at no cost, because that's kind of why we exist, to help with that, so...
Interesting, awesome, thank you. I mean, I guess it's one of those things, gotta be ready, fit, right position, right fit, right location.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can talk more about locations, you think about it, and then see what you want to apply for, and we'll work with you if you need to adjust the location down the road.
I'm kind of with him, I said about here, they can walk to the pizza place, and it's walking distance of, of the food, coolers, and, and the subway, and... So, kind of makes sense.
Okay. Get all your hair here, thank you for the opportunity to come down.
And I wanted to hear to see these marvelous ones who might come up for the fall.
Free money, it's easy money.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh report, moving on to report from Department Head, uh Tim Burgers, Bud Crazier.
Approval of claim sixty seven fifty to sixty eight fifteen, three hundred and seventy six thousand five hundred and fifty seven dollars and thirty two cents.
Motion number four?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the approval of claim sixty seven fifty through sixty eight fifteen.
Oh, favor say aye, motion carries.
I need approval of pay at sixteen from Crosby Construction on the water plant uh construction. One hundred nineteen thousand five hundred eighty seven dollars and five cents.
Motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve the Crosby Construction Pay App number sixteen, one hundred nineteen thousand five hundred eighty seven. I was like going.
Great, yeah, we're just, uh, they're finishing up on uh. After cammering the one well, finishing them up, um just a few, you know. End of this, uh, waiting skate the system, but other than that, it's pretty close, pretty close to being finalized.
Is there a motion second?
I'm second, Brad.
Oh, favor say aye?
Alright.
And I need approval of change order number one, and this is on the community crossings grant, so. The micro surveying that we have done here a couple weeks ago, there was an under run in the project, so. Now, this has um. Got some extra funding that we can do several more, so um. It will be no cost to us, it's already through the grant that we have applied for. And I know Roger has seen some of the um. Streets that they were talking about, Roger and I has been dealing, working with J P R. So all I do is need approval of this change order, and like I said, we'll be doing some more. Micro surfacing and crack filling at no additional cost to the town.
Great, I can't complain, I make approval of that change order number one.
Second.
Oh, favor say aye?
Aye.
I have a request um from the residents at two oh six North Thompson Street on our um sidewalk program. I had a request here a month or so ago from another couple down on Arnold Street, they have decided not to do that this year. Um so, this one, um our, our share of it would be sixteen hundred dollars. It's just very low and not in very good shape. Um and so they are requesting. That pr- program.
If you look at that, Roger? Yeah, it works out, yeah, it's, it's a, it goes down, it's full of the road. I'll make an approval, uh approval. Alright, I'll make a motion, motion to approve the sidewalk request at two at the Thompson for sixteen hundred.
Just sixteen hundred dollars would be our share of it, yeah.
Come on, I will second that.
Oh, favor say aye?
Alright.
Motion carries.
So at the last meeting, we had a conversation about um a lot of the stray cats in town. I was approached by Heidi Carroll, who um her and Tim Harmon, who operate Bourbon Street Pizza. They are asking for approval to do a fundraiser, a pizza fundraiser. To help raise money for Spain neutering cats.
Fine with that.
Alright.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept that, that offer.
I'll second. He is in for community input.
Yep.
Oh, favor say aye?
Aye.
So our office is scheduled for September twenty eighth, praying that it doesn't rain this year. From twelve noon to six o'clock, and it will be out here. Um budget adoption is gonna be on the twenty fourth at six o'clock. And I also received um from AIM, our medical insurance trust. The town will have zero percent increase in the medical premiums for twenty twenty five. I know, I was thrilled with that, so.
That's awesome.
So other than that, that is all I have.
Thank you, Ken, um Chief Martin, your activity reports?
That's the only thing I have.
There's a, if you wanna talk a lot or. Any motions accepted or resignation there?
I'll second that.
Oh, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um nothing else, Chief? Uh Mister Terry?
Yeah, yeah, the activity reports. And the place that the dump is done, the gate is done, okay. Since we're moving to closing, at the beginning of all this, we need a resolution to open it up.
Um, yeah, I'd make a motion, do you have any suggestions on hours?
The hours are posted on the gate out there right now, so the only thing you wanna keep with those hours? Yes.
Okay.
Uh the only thing that's gonna be different is no dumping outside the gate once it's open.
Okay. Um, any discussion on that?
No, I don't have it. Is this, is there Saturday on those hours?
That'd be up to you guys, that would be.
It's not there now.
It's not there now, but Saturdays.
Yeah.
Has been an option, but the police department are taking care of that now, if they do, that's fine. If they don't, then they're gonna pay somebody to stay out there.
Right, yeah, I, I say we pass it, my suggestion is we pass it the way it is, next summer, maybe one Saturday a month.
I agree with that.
Well, if the police department's handling it.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's an inconvenience for them or not, I mean, that's, you know, sometimes it's open, sometimes it's not, I'm not saying. And, and we can't monitor that review, so.
Right, I've got.
We had issues already with, we're trying to dump stuff now, it's not through town, so.
Yeah. Well, that happens already, I mean, when we're monitoring, people coming in.
Right.
It's helped, but even when we're monitoring it, that's not really a, to me, valid argument, but.
We're at the, we're at the end of the season, so I don't see any point in changing, setting hours at this point.
You're coming into the league season. So league season, people, you know, probably be wanting to take their leaves down there.
What do you think, Roger?
Again, I'll leave it to you guys for Saturday. The hours, I agree.
What's your opinion?
You tell me, and if you need to open, I'll open it, and I'll close it. I think in the past, like in the past, it was like for me to noon, it's always open, and that's, basically. One shift, you know, one thing, or, or we can.
Hey, let me ask you this, is it benefit to the town employees for people to be able to take their. Waste down there, or is it more of a?
It's a point it is, you know, until they take advantage of it. Yeah, a lot of people pick up a lot of sticks in the, on the weekends when they're off. They utilize it quite a bit on Saturdays.
How much time do you need to plan for that, for fall? So we, so you get everybody on a schedule, so that. And just put it on the activity or?
You tell me what hours you want it open, unlock it then, open the gates, and then we'll close it when you want it closed.
When does league season start?
It'll be usually it's about mid October somewhere.
The rigging table from that.
Yeah, I'll have more scheduled on the leagues too, I was gonna say, but it will be about mid October, it's like Thanksgiving.
Okay. So I, I suggest that, my, my recommendation, since they're at the hours, they're already set forth on the gate. We're gonna ta- or we're gonna discuss it in October after we have time to talk to.
I agree with that.
Okay, when?
I'll make a motion.
You second it?
I second that.
As far as the opening and.
Yeah, when you're gonna start?
Monday? Next Monday, you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Uh Suzie Schetzel.
Hi, um the paint commission didn't meet this month. Um we had a quick meeting for Misty and Adam Hook, um for the B Z A, so they were approved for their store building. Um I did have for the B Z A, Tim McIntyre's schedule doesn't go well with our meetings. So he has resigned uh from the B Z A, I sent you an email about that. And I have spoke personally with Jill Monodino, and she's willing to accept the position if you approve her.
I'll make a motion to approve Jill Monodino, I will second that.
Oh, favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um and then on my. Report, I did send a second letter to the property at four oh seven North Street, Alex has that issue, she's not responding.
Uh Alex, you're on the phone, have you had anything with four oh seven?
Oh.
So is that technically an ordinance violation? It's already in process, so just, I, I suggest we still send them a letter, try to go through a proper channel, but. I think we probably ought to add that to the letter.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
The ordinance violation having.
Right, and it was stated in her very first letter, I did um. Put the album ordinance, the entire wording in her letter.
I just wanna make sure that people understand that it's already in place, it's not something that we're adding.
Oh, yeah, it is, it's been there uh before me. Um the, uh, last thing is.
What'd you say, Ken?
I was just gonna ask you, did you send that letter certified to her?
I did not.
Okay.
But I did send to, to the homes, three months apart. Um the other thing is, and um. I'm only gonna, well, I know we have a cat issue, but I've had a couple complaints in regards to when people walk their dogs. Um they're not cleaning up after them, and we do have an ordinance in place. The Bourbon codified one, it's on page ninety six. And it says that it shall be required for anyone walking an animal covered by this ordinance to do so with a leash or other appropriate method of controlling such animals. And to retrieve and properly dispose of any waste caused by such animal during any such day. So it's just kind of on my mind here, I know that it's not really my, my job or anything, um. But with it already being an ordinance that's been here for years, um. I guess you want to contact the police department and.
Well, there's only one commission ordinance ticket, so.
Okay, well, I just um. Wanted to read the ordinance, just so that it's all stated out there again, um, you know, it's there, hopefully people understand.
See, I can think there was a little common sense, but. I know, I have the same problem.
Do you have anything else to do?
Oh, no, that'll be all.
Thank you. And Chad's stuff's not here.
I got his. Okay, so they had six calls last month, two gas leaks, two medical assists, and two calls that were disregarded. Uh he wanted to let um everyone know that the fire department is hosting an open house. On Saturday, September twenty first, from eleven to three, and he is asking permission to shut down. Park Avenue here.
Is like a cookhouse or?
Um it, no, it's kind of an open house for people to come and see the fire department, they're gonna give. Fire truck rides to the kids, they have several other events scheduled. Um it's just more of a community thing, I do believe they're having. Uh food and things like that for the people, but yeah, eleven to three on the twenty first.
Motion, I'll make a motion to.
I'll second that.
Oh, favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You have anything else for Chad?
No.
Uh Alex, you have anything for us?
Uh I actually did not say.
Okay. Um. Moving on then, thanks Alex, moving on to, I wanna thank the kids for showing up. I think it's important, as I always say, for you guys to be engaged, engaged. Um so, do you guys have anything to say?
Who's representing them? Who's representing them?
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um moving on, any patron comments and concerns, if you would, if you have anything, would be step forward to prepare the microphone, state your name, or what. Concerns you have or comments?
Uh Greg Gilgram, Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. Uh I'm, I wanna apologize, I haven't been here recently, I've had some conflicts and with guys only meeting once a month. It's been uh difficult for me to make it in, but I just wanted to update you on some things we're working in the area. Um I am working with some local landowners on some development, uh don't have anything to publicly announce yet, but it continue to talk, um. They also work with some of the local industry shells for uh they're continuing their improvement. And then also uh C T Palmer and uh Falcon Fabricating, both on uh internship and training. Uh opportunities, they, they had some people in there, um. Uh Triton School, we, we're working with them also on, I don't know if you're aware that they've broken down on the Marshall County Career Innovation Center now. And uh we're real excited about that coming along, that Career Innovation Center will bring in uh C T E training for the ten different school districts. Will consolidate that in one area, so that now kids from Triton that wanna take welding don't have to go all the way to Knox. Uh to take that, they can take that and plummet down and some other uh issues, and that's uh coming along nicely. Uh U S thirty Coalition, we uh working hand in hand with them. Uh a month or two ago, we had a meeting over in Warsaw with a bunch of uh elected politicians. And we talked about uh how important uh U S thirty, that whole co- that whole corridor is uh for safety. Uh there's a lot of accidents in, in, you don't have to be out there very often to see that the track, traffic has increased exponentially on thirty. And one issue that is, uh fortunately for Bourbon, uh the three thirty one. Uh that's not gonna change at all, but you have others like twelfth Road, Beach Road, those are concerns that we have expressed to them, that we. Wanna see uh something done there, and also uh frontage roads, so that people aren't cut off, so looking at that. Um. We're reaching a housing study of M Cog, we're working M Cog on a regional housing study. Uh for both Saint Joe, Elkhart, and Marshall County, something that uh that incorporates the entire region and looking at, you know. What housing's available, what, what are their needs uh in that's coming along, that end of that should be in this next month, I know that we. Uh have had some meetings about that, so uh interesting to see how that uh comes out. Um, one of the things in there is uh ideas to attract developers, that's been an issue, and it's been an issue locally here is. Uh to attracting developers to get involved in, in, in these projects, you know, there, there's possibility for development out there. But trying to attract a developer that's willing to take it on is uh problematic. There are some interesting ways that uh communities can work with the infrastructure in these developments, you know. Typically, a developer will put in the infrastructure and then donate that back to the city. Uh there are other ways to do that, that have, are some financial incentives for developers, and we're looking at, uh is that a possibility? To do that. And one, and the last thing I wanted to talk about was uh Bourbon is in a really nice situation as far as. Uh for years and years, we've talked about U S thirty thirty one being that, that crossroads, you know, and what a great logistical. Uh asset that is, uh here in the future, and you've probably heard it, more and more uh power is becoming a, a limiting factor for industry. Uh as we electrify, and you, and you guys were talking about, you know, electric vehicles, you know. Electric power is becoming more and more important to uh industry, for instance, that A W S project that they announced up in uh. New Carlisle was an eleven billion dollar uh project, they actually wanted that to be twenty billion, but A E P can't provide enough electricity to that. So that's why uh where Bourbon is ideally located is the transmission lines that you guys have. Uh running through, in person community, also you sit on the edge of two different grids, MISO is a major grid operator. For the Midwest, P J M is a major grid operator for the East Coast, and Bourbon is sitting right where those two meet. So what, you know, how we've used thirty and thirty one as an advantage for logistics and, and attracting industry in the future. Having those power grids meeting here with those transmission lines, and transmission lines are honestly the most expensive part of. Electric distribution, you know, the generation isn't the issue, it's those transmission lines, so that's why industry. Electric distribution, you know, the generation isn't the issue, it's those transmission lines, so that's why industry. Is more and more, they're looking at where are those transmission lines that we can locate, so, uh, that's actually spurred some interest locally. Um, I don't have anything to report publicly on that, but that, but that is in the works. So, uh, I would just ask for your continued support and, uh, um. If, I know we've sent an invoice and I'd love to have you as a partner. Any questions?
It's a, I guess with that being said, what are we, what are we looking at, as far as continuing support?
Ten thousand dollars is what we have, uh, invoiced in the past and, and received from you. And, uh, we would welcome that again.
Is that from January to January?
That's for the entirety, yes, this would still be twenty-four.
We're looking at ten for the rest of this year and ten for twenty-five.
And this, yeah, and I would come back in twenty-five, yeah.
That's our budget.
And it, it can be quarterly payments, I mean, it's, I think.
Well, we're almost to the end of that.
Yeah.
End of the year, so we're almost to the fourth quarter now. It was budgeted, Greg was here at the beginning of the year and did not ever ask for that support at the beginning of the year and you guys never voted, so. It, they continue to send the invoice and it's studying in my gr, my group.
Right, uh, I, I'm gonna jump in, I'd like to set up a meeting sometime and just have a, I'm in with us. And I have some things I want to discuss and I want the table now.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, and I, I think, uh, tomorrow's our quarterly, uh, county development for the future. I know, uh, I think Wes is, uh.
Wes should be going to that tomorrow, yeah, at the back forty.
Yeah.
It's back forty, right?
Yes.
It started at eleven?
Uh, eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
Yep. Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
When is, uh, I know your schedule, when's a good time to set up something for everybody?
Well, I, it, it mean it varies, day to day, really, anytime, I mean, whatever's convenient for you guys, uh.
You guys, when you guys wanting to set up something?
And, and that'll be a work, because of the, yeah, work session for you, so, whatever, you have to advertise.
Yeah, man. I'm gonna be out there in the month, again, next month, so.
Wednesday's out for me, Tuesday's out, Tuesday and Wednesday's out for me, actually, yeah.
Um. Thursday in the evening? The twenty-sixth?
I think I can do that.
What time would you be able to have this meeting?
Uh, on the twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth, that's two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, no, the nineteen.
Oh, the nineteen? Yeah, um. Either early in the morning or I, I could do, um. Uh, afternoon, anytime.
I need to have afternoon meeting.
Or, or I gotta travel back. Which, like, two o'clock, is that? Three, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is the other patron comments? Thanks, Greg.
Yes, thank you.
Any other patron comments? No one? Uh, council member comments? Uh, I had asked for, to be able to get quotes for the pavilion, I've reached out to some different companies that will return a conversation. Do we still, is it, is it still like municipalities post that, looking for quotes, is that something that's still done or?
Not, I mean, now that the state of Indiana has changed that bid threshold. We don't have to go through the, a bidding process on that, I'm just, this time of the year, you're, I mean, it's, you're gonna get nobody. Cause everybody's so busy trying to get it up.
Even show up.
Mm-mm, have, did you call Ramco or any of them local?
Um, I did.
Okay.
Say who it was, but I called.
Okay, they're just not interested in it, not big enough for them?
I don't know, I, maybe I can pick any of the, the other ones, but, um. I'd like to at least give a number on it, if anything, that way we know what we're looking at, you did get it, get it fixed, right, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we, so.
That'd be nice to have a, a national.
Okay, I can drive up other places, I just didn't know.
I'll look at a couple places too.
And if you want, I can meet with them.
That's just for the roof, right, that's what you're looking at?
Yep.
Yeah.
I have no discussion on that.
You have a motion on the board to adjourn the meeting?
Did he have any? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, it's been a very special time, thanks, all right.